Six thirty-five, we'll get started and John is on his way. And he'll catch up with us when he gets here. Can we call the meeting to order?
So moved. Second.
Second the agenda.
Acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. We'll get ready to number three, discussion vote of the easements related to the public access. Al?
Al and Brendan Moss.
Brendan, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's right.
In accordance with the April eleventh annual town meeting votes, the Board of Selectmen must take several actions in order to complete the acceptance of the four streets that we voted on at the annual town meeting for acceptance as public ways. And what we do now is, you have to take a vote to take permanent easement in order to establish the public ways for drainage and municipal services, basically so we can get in there and do maintenance on it, do the repairs and do the maintenance. And then you have to vote to adopt orders, plans, and estimates for the assessment of betterments to fund those requirements, because those improvements are being funded by the residents as part of the acceptance of their streets as public way. Our town attorney's firm, under Brendan's guidance, has prepared all the necessary documentation. And I'm not sure how much more discussion you'd like to have me have with you.
Why don't we see? You guys...
Seems to make sense to me. I mean, as you say, this is an administrative step, just to get this going, and town meeting approved it, and off we go. Brendan, you guys have gone through this, and it seems to be legally in order, and...
Exactly. The one thing I would point out is just that there's three sets of documents for each set of streets, or each area that's being done. So we should have six documents assigned, plus some mylaws for the plans.
Okay. Sean?
Couple of things, is it Brendan?
Brandon.
Brandon, where you from, just so everyone knows, you're from...
Sure. Brandon Moss, I'm with Murphy, Hess, Uti, me and Lehane, which represents the town as town council.
And I just was gonna say that this is kinda nice. I just remember seeing these at like the annual town meeting, so it's kinda nice if there's any questions or concerns. Nice, thank you.
Great. I'll pause for a second.
Can I ask a question while there's a moment of silence here for a second? Al, can you bring us up to speed on Walnut Tree Hill? And maybe, the best you can, I know Laura's been handling it, but while we're on that subject...
Let's clear this up, and then we can talk. We talked about that at our street acceptance meeting, at the last meeting. So, I'll let you get organized. I didn't know if you had any questions on the street acceptance stuff?
Not at this point, thank you.
So this is, so we're voting for the betterment, and we're voting for the easements. And this was all passed at town meeting. So it's just the next technical step. And this is our, in our big scope plan, to get all these streets under the correct guidelines, and then under the town for their supervision.
Mr. Chair, we have a suggested motion, not on our pink slip, but on the Al's memo. Is that probably, has that been reviewed, and okay?
One of the, my memo has been reviewed by the town's attorney.
Okay, great. Do you want a motion, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Move that the Board of Selectmen adopt orders of taking by eminent domain for permanent easements on the layouts of Cornerstone Lane, Blossom Street, Pineview Drive, and Pineview Lane for the purposes of establishing such public ways in any pertinent drainage and municipal services. Further, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to adopt orders, plans, and estimates for the assessment of betterments for the purpose of making improvements to said ways in the amounts not to exceed as follows: Cornerstone Lane, four thousand dollars; Blossom Street, thirty thousand dollars; Pineview Drive and Pineview Circle, one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, good job. While you're up here, Al...
Thank you, Brendan.
I'll just speak for two seconds about it, and pipe in, you know, we had, I think there were two other applicants at the street acceptance meeting last week, and then the Walnut Tree people came down as well. That is proceeding. All the people that came seemed to be comfortable with the direction it was taking. A consultant had looked at one half of the project, and I think we got a bid back on that. And there's a whole nother half that has to be looked at. And then, I think they were happy with the progress that the town had been taking over the last six months, maybe, or three months, Al, in working with the insurance company to get it resolved. So we're definitely taking, yes, in the right direction. That's great.
There are three areas of costs. The town has decided to go after the bond for the developer on behalf of the residents and whatever. So we are now in the process of developing the three sets of costs, the cost for fixing the road deficiencies. There are some questions about whether or not the retention basin was built as per the planning board's design, or as per the board, as per the design they presented to the planning board. Thirdly, there is a serious erosion that's created coming down by the old bucket house and the design for that. Those three cost estimates, cost projection, we put together by the end of July, and then the town will have what it needs to turn over to the attorney's firm to continue with the work with, to get the bond.
Thank you, Al, that's great. People that might not have seen your meeting, you were talking about, I'm sure are watching it tonight, right Rick?
Yep. There were quite a few of them here, so it's good, they're right on top of it. Thanks, Al. Move on to number four, which is meet the applicants. We'll just go right down the list. These are for reappointments of applicants to boards that we, that they've served on in the past. In an effort, maybe more pushed by me than others, but trying to get people to come in, even if they're being reappointed, so that they can put their face in front of the board, and some of us may be new and haven't met them before. So, once a year to come in and ask, you know, to have a little conversation with us for thirty seconds is kind of what our goal is. If you can make it great, if not, it probably will not impact your reappointment. But, do we wanna just run through the list? And if you're here, come on up, and are we gonna vote on each of them individually, or at the end?
At the end.
Right, so we'll just see if they're here. George Grafton, Trachten?
Here.
How are you?
Sure.
Come on up, George. You're wearing the T-shirt, we figured might as well get you some face time on that.
And you're reapplying for the Affordable Housing Trust?
Correct.
Great.
And also, I'm also applying for a CPC appointment at large, new appointment. I've been on CPC at one time as the representative from the Cituit Housing Authority for about, about two years, and then I resigned my position in the Cituit Housing Authority. I became trustee on the Affordable Housing Trust. And I enjoyed working on the CPC very well, because I think it's, that's a great committee, and it's run well. I think it does a lot of good work for the town. I've lived in the town for forty years, so I'm just, I'm enjoying, I'm retired, so I enjoy helping out the town.
Great. Any questions from the ward?
Just observation, it's, George is with me as a trustee, he's done a wonderful job, and position for the CPC is certainly dovetails well with affordable housing, so can't recommend him more, recommend him more.
And you don't wanna do it as the liaison for the...
I am no longer connected with the Cituit Housing Authority. I have resigned.
You're with the trust, right, okay.
So there is another liaison from there already elected.
Right, so the difference between the trust and the authority.
I am applying for the at-large position. I believe there are two vacancies at this point.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, George.
Is Daniel Hoffman here?
Yep, I'm here.
Come on down.
Come on up, Daniel.
How are you?
Thanks, how are you?
Good.
And you are also applying for the Affordable Housing Trust?
Yep, for the first second term. I figured may as well continue for another couple of years. Right in the middle of a few things, so I think for the continuity's sake, that'd be a good idea.
All right. John, any...
Observation, I'm glad you are, because just for the point that you made is that we're in the middle of some significant things that are going on for continuity and consistency. You know, it takes a while to get up to speed, and of course now we have members who are up to speed. So, Dan, I thank you for, and George, for asking to be reappointed.
Yep, well, thank you.
Great. How many, are these the only two spots open?
For this year.
For this year, and they're both open, great. Thank you, Daniel.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, guys.
This Elizabeth Foster? Great, and she is looking for reappointment as archivist. Dorothy O'Connor? Dorothy O'Connor, nope. She's for the Animal Control Board. Nancy Towel? Another Animal Control Board. Russell Clark? For the Board of Health? No. Greg Harris?
Not here.
Bylaw Review Committee?
Not here.
Not here.
Nope. If you guys have any comments on them, you know, feel free to speak up. James O'Hern?
Yeah.
Hi, come on up, James.
Didn't know I was being reappointed or anything. I was already there for a while.
You will be.
Been in town for twenty-seven years, and been on the Bylaw Committee for five or six.
Great.
Don't know what else you want me to say. Meet two or three times a year, and what were the things that we need to go over?
Great, and is that a full committee?
Yes.
It is at this time, great. And this is the only, oh no, these two appointments are the two ones that are up?
Correct.
Great. And any comments from anyone on the board? Nope. Great, well, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Say that again?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Grace, thank you for coming in. Russell?
Yes.
Come on up, perfect timing.
Have a seat. Put you right on the spot. Sure.
Appreciate, and you're up for reappointment for the Board of Health?
Yes, I am.
Great. Any questions before? No? How long you been doing it? Tell us a little bit about yourself for thirty seconds, and...
Been on the board for nine years, three appointments. My background was land surveying, and I think when I got on the board, it was the director's opinion that it was good to have a blue collar guy there. There were two attorneys that were on the board, and I kinda presented the Title V background.
Great. Yes, Sean.
Can I just make a comment? As liaison of Board of Health, I've really enjoyed attending their meetings, very informative, and each time I go, I think I learn, take something from it. Thanks to you, Frank and Mike, I learn something every meeting. Town's been a place to have you on the Board of Health. Thank you, Russell.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure to serve. I hope to continue.
Well, thank you for coming in, and we'll do the voting at the end of the night, so watch us on TV.
I appreciate it, thank you so kindly.
Thanks, Russell. Kathy Meeker is up for the Cable Television Committee, she's not gonna be here this evening. Judith?
I'm on that committee, and she's a stalwart and very valuable to have on there.
Judith Byrne-Ariel? She's not able to be here either, probably says that. Paige Tobin for the Commission on Disabilities. I spoke with Paige, she can't be here tonight, but she is interested in serving another term. Paul Paris? Conservation Commission? He's out of the country.
He's probably up there somewhere. He's a pilot, he had a CONCOM meeting last night, and he builds his entire schedule around CONCOM, so back-to-back days were tough for him. But, he's been on for three years, he's from Hummerock, he's doing a good job.
Dale Balag? For Council on Aging. Rocco's Karibes? Karibs?
Robis.
Robis? Sorry, Rocco? Council on Aging, Joan Powers? I can do that one, Council on Aging. Another Council on Aging, Meg Stillman? She's not here? Yes, Sean?
I just was gonna say, for each and every one of those, every meeting I've attended on the Council on Aging when I was liaison, they've been very active, and been at every single meeting.
Great. Yeah, here, nothing but good things. John Bowman? I don't see him in the audience, CPA. Paul Scott? Not here either, both for CPA. I know John's been the chair for maybe three years. Has done great, and good legal advice, and good direction there. Paul is, probably knows more about the town than most of us, and he's a great asset to the committee too. Stephen Litchfield?
Steve's here.
Steve in the back?
Yeah.
How are you?
Good.
Good. And you're...
I filled in a position in the first duration of the stroke commission, right after it was created. I was the lone peanut gallery attendee at a lot of the meetings, so they drafted me. So, this is the second time around.
Great.
I have a lot of interest in historical stuff, my family's pretty historical, we came here and said what happened on both sides. So, I'm interested in preserving some of the history of the town, and seeing if we can, you know, say some of the old stuff that we've been losing recently, so there's a lot going on. We're right now just starting to put together a demolition review, which was something that was part of the reason we started the commission, where we didn't have it. So, I'm hoping we can do something good. There's a lot of good projects going on.
Great. Any comments?
Doing a great job. I like the demolition review, I'd like to see that, that'll be good.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have something, we're finally getting there. It took a while to get our feet in the water and figure everything out, but we're putting together what I think will be a good package.
Good.
Well, we see you active in all the events, so we thank you for that, and thank you for serving on this. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, come to the 4th of July, we're gonna have a good one, so...
We'll be there.
I gotta go to that meeting now.
Christine Peters? She's not able to come, Cultural Council. Didi, is it Sprecker? No, another one for the Cituit Council, Cultural Council. Ed DeSalvio?
Ed's not here, no.
Ed's not here for the Public Building Commission. Dorothy Cook? I don't see Dorothy here, for Traffic Rules and Regulation. Dorothy works in the, in the school department, and is in charge of all the transportation there, so clearly very valuable input to things there. Karen McDonald? Traffic Rules and Regulation. Lawrence Nyland? Not able to come, Waterways? Sean, do you have anything to say?
He's my neighbor.
Is he?
Good guy.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
I don't wanna step on Rick's toes.
Yeah, he's very active.
Well, that's right, he's a liaison.
Very active, good guy.
Water Resource, Elise Klein? John Hallen? ZB A? John's not here, but he's been participating for decades. So now we have the new applicants. So those are all the reappointments. Rick, I'm gonna pass over the reading to you on these.
Uh, yeah, sure, right. Chris Matthews, Board of Registrar, is Chris here? Okay. Kathy Bullock? For Cable TV Committee? And can you just introduce yourself, and tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you wanna be in the Cable TV Committee?
Sure, I'm Kathleen Bullock. I have experience, about twenty-five years' experience in producing broadcasts for commercials, advertising. I also have my teaching certification in Massachusetts for art, and I run a small theater group here in town. So all of those different artistic qualities, as well as business qualities, give me a certain understanding of the process, and hopefully will lend a new level of professionalism and organization to the group.
Great. Should probably recuse myself, Kathy's my sister-in-law, but...
Oh yeah, okay, so, but this, right. She's just passing on information, but when the vote comes, but...
Okay.
Questions from anybody?
I don't, nope.
Personally, she'd be a great asset to the committee, so thanks for coming in, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Torsney?
Not here.
Not here. Maureen Colburn? Not here, okay.
Can I just jump in here for one second? If you guys recall, we met Maureen not too long ago.
She applied for the Economic Development Committee, I think it was, or something else?
I thought it was CONCOM.
Originally, okay.
Not that long ago, so was there an opening, or something? All right, okay.
I don't remember, yeah, okay.
Excuse me.
It was CONCOM.
That's what I thought.
Carolyn Sax?
Okay, Carolyn Sax? She's up for Council on Aging? There's Carolyn. How are you? Tell us a little bit about yourself, I read your, your application here. You wanna be involved with it, great, any, anything we should know particularly?
I volunteered for about, almost four years at the Council on Aging. I like the people there. I have a good time with the, with the people that come in, and I enjoy it.
Great.
That's all I need to hear.
No? Any questions, guys? Great, well, thank you for your participation, and, you know, we'll be voting at the end of the meeting. I don't know how many slots are open on that, but we'll talk about it, then one for the new ones. Great, thank you for coming in. Richard Mitchell? I'll read the easy ones, Rick.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
I see you applied for both CPA and Council on Aging.
Right.
Thank you. Wanna tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, I've been in town for two years. Been in Massachusetts my whole life, but just moved to town, wanted to get more involved. I've been an executive in both healthcare and higher education for the last twenty-five years. Was Executive Vice President of Harvard Vanguard Medical Associates, and with Harvard Pilgrim, and was Chief Operating Officer of Roger Williams University in Rhode Island. Been doing a lot of consulting in healthcare for the last ten years. So, I'm interested in Community Preservation Committee, it just looked, looked interesting, and be able to, you know, review investment potential, you know, on environmental, and historical, and recreational areas for town. Also thought, you know, given my background, could be useful to the Council on Aging.
Great. Any questions or comments?
Do you have a preference?
Well, the CPC looked more interesting.
Okay. Thank you. How many, just for my, well, we can talk, how many openings do we have for, for CPC? Yeah.
Two.
Two? Okay.
You have four at large positions. Two have a separate employment requirement, and you have two in the designs, so two completely exclusive.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you for coming in.
One way or the other, you're gonna be on one, I can assure you that. Thank you.
Maybe both. Hey, Lisa?
How are you?
Good, thank you. Tell us a little bit about yourself that we probably already know.
I'm coming up on my fourteenth year as a Cituit resident, and been fortunate enough to be on a variety of groups and boards, including elementary and middle school, PTO, Cituit Education Alliance, and Sustainable Cituit. And I've been lucky enough to be, have experience on the advisory board for two terms. And within that time, I think I became pretty familiar with not only community needs and desires, but also voids and needs on the town government side, and feel like I could do a good job in maybe helping to focus and prioritize some of the proposals that come through to CPC.
Any questions?
You've been on CPC for two years, or a year, a year anyways?
I was a liaison to CPC.
Yeah, okay. For a number of years, right, for a couple of years, or?
Three, I think.
Yeah, so, so you understand the process, and from the advisory committee, you were the liaison there, and have been pretty active in it.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Lisa's always been an asset to the committees I've been on with her, and, you know, you're very, very knowledgeable in CPC stuff, so, thank you for applying.
One second.
Yeah.
I just have one question, Lisa. On your application, you would, just listed your lobby, you'd like to lobby at the state level to broaden CPA's application. How?
Well, I've always felt, first of all, I'd like to commend the current committee for all the work they've done since its inception, I think it was two thousand and eight, was it? So it's fairly new, but I think one of the things that, that we've been missing, and that I would love to help lobby for, because there does seem to be a lot of flexible legislation right now, is that we don't have the ability right now to use any of the administration funds for things like maintenance. So, for instance, we can create a sidewalk or a trail, if you will, but we can't set aside any money for the maintenance of said trail. Or if it's a historical purpose, or, you know, another type of purpose that falls under that purview, that we are not at this point able to use that funding in order to help support the new project that we create, and then, of course, that, that then falls back to the town for their responsibility. And I, and I think that there's some leeways... And I, and I think that there's some leeway there in order to keep the Community Preservation Act alive in the state, that it needs to incorporate some of these needs as it grows.
That's great. Thank you.
And one other one that is very vocal right now too is the ability to repair.
Fields.
Fields and, and different things. Now, right now you have to start from scratch.
Right.
And you know, particularly towns in the city don't have the land to start from scratch, so you can't use those funds right now to repair um things. And that's another hot topic that I'm sure the lobbyists are all over, so. Great. Thank you for, for applying.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh George is here again, but uh we already talked to him a couple of minutes ago. Um Steve McGuire. Steve McGuire's applying for CPA. Ruth Wagner. Hi Ruth, how are you? Good.
I'm, well, I'm, I'm a full-time Situate resident for just the last three years, but I've been summering here for thirty years and my husband's family's been here since nineteen thirty-seven. Um we love the town. Our plan was always to retire here. And so in the last couple of years, I just retired two years ago and continued to consult for my company until about seven months ago. And um I now have the, the time, I have the skills, I think, to contribute to the CPC. Um I, in my application, and I have copies if you don't have it, I elaborated a little bit on my background. Um I retired as Assistant Vice President from John Hancock after twenty-eight years. And we managed, I was in charge of managing all of our major client relationships and also involving sales. Um it involved budgeting, pri- um project selection, analyzing them, prioritizing them. Um making sure they got done and keeping clients happy. Um but now that I have that time, um it's time for me to spend time giving back to the community we live in. And this, I think this is a fascinating committee. The variety of the projects that they work on. They benefit everyone in the town. Um I take advantage of them myself all the time and I'd love to be able to uh help them out and contribute to that.
Great. Any questions?
You say you were in New York State uh for a while?
Yes, I uh, I was born in New York State, uh downstate, and then went to college up in western New York. And uh stayed in, up there for a while and taught for a number of years and then was in the political realm for a while in Albany and also in Buffalo.
Yeah, cool.
Good training for this town.
I, I love the politics and um it's, it's a lot of fun.
Under jelly?
Nope, thank you.
Great. Yeah, um one quick question uh for you. Um this is a very popular item, you know, there's, there's two slots and there's probably, you know, six or seven people applying. Is there any other committee that you were interested in? Um I mean, this kind of fits your background. I saw the, the good match there, but I didn't know if there was something else.
I, well, at this time, this was obviously the one that I, I wanted, um I was the most interested in. I, I would consider the Council on Aging also. Um and you see from my background in the insurance, in the last number of years, I was in the long-term care insurance area. So we were very familiar with issues and concerns of the aging population and particularly residencies and care of them. So I have some interest in that, though I will say the CPC is my, my first choice.
Great. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And the last two, Ralph Studley. Ralph, how are you?
Good.
You're applying for Recreation Commission?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and.
Sure. I uh, I grew up in Situate. My wife grew up in Situate. We just recently moved back in the last year or so. Been pretty actively involved, you know, for the last ten years in different sort of fundraising efforts throughout the town of Situate. Um Jennifer Fadelli, who runs the Recreation Commission, is a close friend of mine and actually former business partner. We did a lot of fundraising together over the last ten years. Um my background is in municipal finance. I work for uh an investment management firm in Boston. I'm a municipal product manager for them, so I have a lot of experience as far as, as far as being the, the end purchaser, institutional purchaser of, you know, municipal products, so I have some, I think, insight into the, into, into the season of municipal finance. I hope, I don't know how much that will apply to the Recreation Commission, but when it comes to dollars and cents, I have a little bit of insight there in terms of how things work. And uh really just o- overall, I just been doing something for the town now that we're back. We have a little one and it seemed like a natural kind of start to get myself involved in a promotion if there was some opportunity, so. Here I am.
Great. Any questions? Sean, any?
Answered the only one I had.
Sean's a liaison for uh Rec.
Recreation.
And um very busy and, and really thousands and thousands of, of kids run through the program, so it's a vital part of the community.
Right.
Thanks for coming in and uh, you know, we'll make the appointments later on in the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And uh the last one on the list is David Smith. Is David here? Okay. Um before we go on to the next one, I just didn't know, did anybody who was on the list applying for something walk in after we started? Okay. Great. So Kim, do we just read these um about the, the Democratic representative? Or is it? How do we uh?
Uh, do you want to, I'm going to uh agenda, I don't have a.
Okay, so these are just the background for that?
Yes.
Okay. Great. So we'll move on to the next item. Walk-ins. You know, before we start the walk-ins, I wanted to just make a, a quick announcement. Obviously, we're missing a, a key component of the board up here. Uh Mr. Norton has been ill lately and we just wanna pass on our, our best wishes. He's on a, on, he's on the mend and we wish him a speedy recovery. And um like I said, he's, we see progress every day. We, we get progress reports every day and he's definitely moving in the right direction. But for those of you that, that notice a void like we do, just wanna make uh everyone aware of, of the situation. One other quick announcement. Um you'll see a familiar face over there on the right. Uh Tricia was, missed our last meeting because she was away at school, back at school where they jammed a semester worth of work into a couple of weeks. And uh good to have you back as well. I know you're gonna be preparing a report and, and tell us all about it. Um but, but welcome back as well.
Thanks to Chief Stewart for acting in my absence. He did a great job and I wanna extend my appreciation to him.
Great. Thanks. Are there um any other walk-ins? Matt, come on up.
I have a citation from the Massachusetts House of Representatives. That should be delivered to you people.
Can you come up, can you just come up to the mic?
That way we can see on TV.
So they can see your face on television and.
That's the last thing we really need around here.
This way we can hear you though, Matt.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts House of Representatives, be it hereby noted to all that the Massachusetts House, Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to the town of Situate in recognition of the celebration of its three hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of the town's incorporation. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope that for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this first day of June, nine, two thousand and eleven at the State House in Boston, Massachusetts by Robert A. DeLeo, offered by State Representative James Cantwell. So that's for you people. And uh thank you all for the cooperation that you've given the committee.
Great.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. That's probably a perfect segue to uh remind everybody that on Monday, we are having a big celebration down in Cole Parkway for the Fourth of July and our three hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. So uh show up. There's gonna be quite a lot of uh activity going on and I think we'll be talking about it a little bit later, but um that's great. Thanks for getting that, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Any other walk-ins? Chief? Chiefs?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good to see you.
Hi, yeah, um I guess you guys wanted a little update on our Third of July preparations. Um well, we, we met in a executive session before, but actually we'd really like to get the word out. This year, things are gonna be a little different. We're gonna try to tone down the Third of July festivities in the Hammuraki and over in the beaches of Situate. Bonfire-wise, you're gonna have to have a permit to have a bonfire. There's a lot of restrictions on it. Any information um you need, or you need a permit, you gotta go down to the uh Fire Headquarters at one forty-nine First Parish Road. And the last day to get a permit will be Friday at four o'clock. Um we're gonna, let me see, it's uh, it's been out of control the last few years. Between uh the fireworks last year, we brought the um, the state Fire Marshal's office, the state police with the bomb squads. And they said that they were horrified at what goes on down there. And um, you know, it's, it's time to start toning it down and then try to get, get a better grasp of it. And so I think this is gonna be a good first step in accomplishing that goal. I say i- it might not be done all, you know, one year, it might take a couple of years, but just to um to get it back to uh safe, family fun. And that, and that's what our intent's gonna be.
Yeah, as far as for the police, uh we'll, we'll order everybody to work on the night of the third. It'll give us uh between our own people and co-host at the Sheriff's Department and uh our summer people. We'll have about forty-two officers out there. We'll also have several working inside. And it, they'll be scattered throughout the town. Uh you know, we'll have the flexibility to move them around as needed. Uh on the night of the, on the day and night of the fourth, we'll have a sufficient number, probably not that many, but enough to uh, you know, to take care of the situation. We'll be aggressively enforcing uh all public conduct regulations, especially disorderly public drinking, minor transporting. Um like the chief said, we're, we're not trying to spoil anybody's fun. We, we want everybody to have an enjoyable and safe holiday. That's what it's, what it's all about.
So we've got a flyer here, which, which goes over the rules of doing a bonfire. We're not saying that bonfires are not allowed, but that you do have to get a permit for them and you do have to run them according to the law. As, as Chief Stewart said, we had the state police in here recently and, and everyone has said that it's just such a dangerous situation out there with the, with the number and the, um and the size of the bonfires down there, that it's really a miracle that people have not been more seriously hurt. So um we are being very proactive. The police department and the fire um department are, and like you said, it's, we're still gonna have fun there, but it's just gotta be um at a reasonable level. And it's, there's gonna be more police enforcement down there and they're gonna be cracking down on the violators. So um you know, this is kind of advance warning to, to um beware and, and please run along the, the laws that, that are out, out there uh mandating how these can be uh maintained. Any other uh?
You said it?
No. Great, thank you very much and uh hopefully we'll have an uneventful Fourth.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
One other flyer. I mentioned this briefly about the three hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. Um as I see the, the time here, it starts at nine-thirty um down at Cole Parkway and it goes until about, it looks like about twelve-thirty. No, that can't be. Um about about twelve. Um and there's a, um General George Casey is the uh, the keynote speaker or, and, and Captain Bob Whitehouse are the two speakers there, so. Come on down and enjoy the festivities. Okay, back to business. Number six is discussions of transfers. Mary, are you uh, Mary and Trish?
So I wrote this memo a month ago, so I just. Um each year, um we have a variety of account shortfalls for June thirtieth that we need to satisfy, but happily we also have account surpluses. Mary and I attended the Advisory Committee meeting on June second, which all of these you see before you were unanimously approved. It's a two-step process. They approve and you approve as well. I provided you a pretty detailed memo on um where the transfers are coming from, a couple of points of note. Um first of all, our financial position continues, I think, to strengthen. I anticipate we'll have as much free cash as we did last year, probably more. So even after these transfers are affected, I think that's due uh for a variety of reasons, the new budgeting and commendation of the staff for um really um being frugal and getting the best price at the best pa- um best service. Um the reserve fund, which we have about eighty-four thousand in this year, will also have a surplus for the second year in a row. Traditionally, you've spent that down to zero. We're actually following the statutory purpose of the reserve fund right now, which means we only use it for emergency or unforeseen items that um actually take place during the year that we did not anticipate. The other thing is, um which isn't in the memo, but um I explained to advisory and what I'm endeavoring to do since coming on board is the transfers that we do to satisfy the town side of the budget um don't come out of the fixed cost shares of the formula. So let's say, for instance, the Council on Aging budget had a deficit and there was leftover money in health insurance. That's a fixed cost. I'm not transferring health insurance money to satisfy a town-side operating deficit. In the case of workers' compensation or other things, that's a shared cost. If there's shortfalls there, we're doing that. So I'm endeavoring to do that as much as we can so that um, you know, we're not required to do it. It's all the same pot of money. But I think that that's an equity and fairness thing that I've tried to employ. It's more money traditionally probably than we've seen in past years. Um some of that is due to um some good news relative to the anticipated hopefully settlement of the police contract. There's a ongoing litigation that we did not foresee that has gone on. And um that's the biggest one. And I do want to take advantage of the fact that um we do have a surplus in health insurance. It was a little less than we budgeted, but as you know, we have a significant, in my mind, running shortfall, I think, for the workers' comp self-insured fund. So I'm transferring a big chunk of money into that, which again is a fixed cost. So rather than go itemize, item by item, Mary on the last page has shown me the account numbers, where the money's coming from, where it's going to, and the reason why. And again, um in terms of budgetary control, this is pretty good in terms of our departments needing additional help at the end of the year. Cause most of them, there's actually only um one that was really, I think, could have been a little more preventable. And it's only for twenty-nine hundred. So on a sixty-eight million dollar budget, I think, you know, all in all, it's pretty good.
Pretty good. And I think the key point that you made there was none of the items are free cash that we're funding these from. So all of these departments that were over a little bit are coming from another department that was under a little bit.
Yeah.
Unlike, the school has a, has a single line item where they can transfer funds to departments at, at their leisure, whereas the town has to actually name the department and move it to a certain department. So um so all of this stuff is not really a new expense. It's being covered by a shortfall somewhere else.
We're doing that with the contract settlements too. As you know, there's no money that was in the budgets for non-settled union contracts. And this is doing interdepartmental transfers and not using free cash for the anticipated police contract that we settled.
Any comments or questions? So how do we have to do the motion? Do we have to, do we have to say the departments?
No, you can just say as per task, I think. That's what we did as va- advisory.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve fiscal year eleven transfers as recommended by the Town Administrator and Town Accountant. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous. Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, um on the agenda number seven, uh Senator Hedlund was gonna come and, and talk to us about the state budget, but he uh had a, a commitment come up, so he couldn't make it. So I'm sure he'll be on the agenda in an upcoming meeting.
Are you sure?
I'm not sure.
Second time.
He said he's sure he'll be on the agenda.
Well, you're right. He will be on the agenda.
On the agenda. Okay, so that'll move us onto number eight, which is a uh, an acceptance of a gift. And I am on the, the Board Directors of Little League, so I will uh, I'll talk about this, I guess, and then recuse myself. Little League is uh, is working with a couple of other foundations. One of them being the Reedy Foundation. Paul's sitting in front of us here. The Course Foundation and the Coin Family to put a new um beautiful new scoreboard over at the high school on the baseball field. And the scoreboard that we have there is in very poor condition. It's been there for a long time and uh and we're looking to replace it because our baseball team's been doing great and we wanna get tournament play here. And uh doing great, and we wanna get tournament play here, and, uh, it makes the field look great, and it's, it's needed. Um, so this is gonna be a twenty-foot wide scoreboard with nine innings, and all electronic, and, and remote access and all this sort of stuff. Um, and, uh, like I said, the fundraising was, was primarily led by, uh, Jim Trevina, um, who is the assistant coach on the baseball team and coaches JV team, and has been involved with Little League for years, and he's gone out to some of the, uh, organizations in town. Um, like I said, the Course Foundation, the, uh, High School Baseball Boosters, Shore, not Course, I misspoke last time, the Reedy Foundation, and, uh, and the Coin Family, and, uh, we've raised the seventeen thousand dollars that are necessary to put, um, to put the scoreboard in. The one, uh, thing that we need the town to do is possibly dig a hole, so that the people can come in and put the foundation in there, but other than that, um, the gift of the scoreboard will be for the town.
What's happening to the old one? Anybody know? Can we use it in another field at all, or?
I don't think it's, I, I don't think it could be used this year, so I don't think it's in usable condition. I think you'd have to put some money in to repair it, that people deem is not worthwhile.
Gotcha. Al, can we, can we, uh, have a hole dug to be able to accomplish that for DPW at all?
Sure.
When, I didn't think it was gonna be a problem.
No, too big of a hole.
Other questions? Anybody else? Any questions from the audience? Mr. Reedy, do you wanna say anything? No? I wanna thank you.
It's, uh, twenty feet wide.
It's not green though, it's not the monster. Seeing no questions, um, entertain a motion?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept, on the town's behalf, the kind gift of a scoreboard for the high school baseball field. This donation was made by the Situate Little League, Shore, Situate High Baseball Boosters, the Reedy Foundation, and the family of Nancy Coin, in memory of her parents.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Murray. Further discussion seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
And a, a thank you, and a, Kim, could we be able to send maybe a letter of thank you to, uh, all four associations?
Yes.
And Mr. Uh, Mr. Vignani recused himself. Back to Mr. Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Vignani. Um, number nine, we're gonna, uh, discuss about adopting, um, the Situate Hazard Mitigation Plan. Ms. Harbottle. Laura?
Um, the Hazard Mitigation Plan is something that's required for Situate to get money from certain FEMA programs, um, specifically the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And in Situate, this program has been used for some of the elevation grants. There were about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of grants over the past couple of years, and there are about another hundred and ten thousand that are waiting for adoption of this plan to go forward. It was also used for some drainage improvements that were done, the ones between Jericho Road and Turner Road that were done a couple of years ago. Um, MAPC actually prepared the plan, working with some town department heads, and, um, those included the Fire Chief, the Conservation Agent, the Bill, Building Commissioner, and myself. Um, the plan looked at what areas historically have had the most flooding, and where the town's critical infrastructure is, which is roads, seawalls, utilities, um, housing for the elderly, um, all those types of things, and what can we do reasonably to protect it. And they came up with, um, some praise for things that we're already doing, uh, like the CRS program and some of the zoning that we have, that's very protective of coastal areas. And they also encouraged us to continue doing things like maintaining the seawalls, repairing the seawalls, cleaning our drainage system in areas near the water, um, elevating the flood prone properties, and purchasing properties that might be really vulnerable to flooding if there are ones available. So, um...
That'd be through, that would be through FEMA though, right? To be able to do it?
Yeah. So, I don't know if you have any questions about it, or?
Any questions?
Necessary, yeah, necessary to receive funding in the case we do get a disaster a little worse than December, correct?
Or equal to, yeah. Great, it seems like, uh, how long you been working on this? This has been?
Well, MAPC is the one working on it, they've been working on it for about a year.
Great. I didn't know, uh, I see Bill in the back though, do you have any comments on it, or? Nope? Support? Hundred percent?
Motion?
Great, got a motion?
Move the, go ahead, John. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to adopt and execute the two thousand and eleven Situate Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second?
Second by Mr. Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob, good work on that, Rob.
Moving on to number ten, this is, uh, the discussion of an entertainment license for the Inn at Situate Harbor. Is anyone here from the inn? Kim, did you know if anyone was planning on coming in?
I believe so.
I'll tell you what, why don't we move on to the next item, and see if, uh, we'll give them a little bit more time to come in.
Would you like to make a phone call? I mean, I did, I did contact them by email, but...
Um...
You wait a minute.
No, I don't, you wanna make a phone call?
No, we can wait, I'm sure.
Just wait. Yeah, I mean, you've, you've done all your effort, we'll give them the, uh, benefit of the doubt, we've gone pretty quickly, maybe they didn't know it started at six-thirty. Um, so we'll go to some of the other items and then come back to that. So, um, moving on to number eleven, uh, vote, uh, intent to award a contract, Renewable Energy Committee. Uh, Al Banger and Paul Reedy?
And Kathy Loffus.
And Kathy?
Phil Lumbacher.
And Bill?
I'm gonna take the second row, I guess.
You're welcome to go final, people.
Yeah. We're here, um, I'm here as a DPW, Paul's here with the Energy, Renewable Energy Committee, um, and we have completed, uh, work to identify an energy service company that could work with the town to take advantage of a state law that enables us to hire a qualified energy service firm to come in and develop an energy improvement project in town, whereby, at the end, they will guarantee the amount of money that we will save, and will guarantee the, uh, cost of do, performing the project. And they could therefore guarantee the rate of return that the town will receive. Uh, this is a program that has been in place in the state, I would say, f, well, seven to eight years. Uh, Tricia had extensive experience with it in Springfield, uh, there are numerous other towns around us, I would say virtually every town, uh, is at some, taking some look at the, the concept of this ESCO or Energy Service Company. I know Marshfield, Dedham, Quincy, Belmont, Springfield, as I mentioned, Newton, um, have all got programs underway. The, uh, we, this is a, a very regulated program. Uh, the D O E R is responsible for establishing the methods by which the town can go solicit for firms, uh, to meet the qualifications as energy service companies. Uh, they regulate, uh, how we go after, uh, the firms in terms of requesting their proposals, and what we do in terms of interviewing, uh, what, what data they must provide us with, what, uh, various certifications they must have achieved in order to even be considered for, uh, entering into one of these contracts. The, we issued a request for proposals back in early January, and then the Energy Committee, here's also Bruce Meacham, um, met every Monday night, every Tuesday night for about three months, uh, interviewing firms and deciding what to do about this. Uh, the first few meetings we're at, uh, looking at the proposals and, and going from the, let's see, was it nine proposals we received? Yeah. Narrowing it down to picking the, the, the three that we would like to do extensive interviews with, then doing those interviews, we gave them a project to perform also, um, and then looked at the results of the project, results of the interview, results of, uh, their references throughout other communities they've worked with, and we're here to, to make a recommendation tonight. Now, the, the steps in this process are select a firm to do Phase One, and that's all we're talking about today, which is the investment grade energy audit. The investment grade energy audit is performed by the firm, where they look at all of our town facilities, sewer plant, schools, fire stations, town hall, uh, and determine what are the energy improvements that, uh, pro, potential projects could, could be made. And they will probably present us with a list of, say, three hundred projects, and be, and then make recommendations of which ones will have a positive rate of return for the town if we were to proceed. And that's all we're asking for today, is to select the firm who would do the investment grade audit. There'll be no cost to us to do the audit if we go to the next phase, which is then execute on the project with the same firm. Okay? You with me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, after narrowing it down to three firms, the committee unanimously decided that we should, uh, move forward with a firm by the name of Amoresco, located in Framingham. Amoresco has been in the energy service business, uh, for more than a decade, and has done numerous towns around. For instance, they were just, they were just awarded, the Merrimack Valley Planning Council went out and selected them for all the towns that are in the Merrimack Valley. So, they're a well thought of firm, uh, we think highly of them, and I think Paul might wanna add to that.
Yeah, I, I, you know, thanks to the committee and Al. Al had a great system, um, you know, charting each one of the nine, uh, and as he, as he alluded to, we, we met a, a number of times throughout January, February, and through the charting mechanism, we took every one of their proposals and just tried to break it down in terms of how comprehensive they were, experience, et cetera, and a whole number of guidelines that we thought were, uh, helpful in, in picking, you know, the best fit. Um, from there, as Al also said, we narrowed it to three, um, we actually had a few of them come in a couple of times.
Mm-huh.
Uh, because it was difficult, as you got through the process, you really started picking up different pieces that you might not have missed at the, at the forefront. Um, and then finally, we were all in, in the group, uh, we submitted, you know, a blind, uh, vote of who we had the most confidence in, and it was unanimous, which was great. Um, we also did have, we did also did have a runner-up, that we thought if for some reason, uh, the way we had phrased our, uh, motion, if for some reason, uh, Amoresco couldn't do it, uh, then we had a backup, so that we don't have to replicate the process again. Um, you know, again, the committee was great, we have a lot of engineers, I wanna thank everybody there. Uh, it was a lot of time, and, and, uh, I think it's gonna be great, I think one of the things that kept, I kept discussing after sitting where you folks are, was the, the capital plan and how difficult it is for people in the capital plan, as well as Board of Selectmen, when you can't do the capital outlay because there is no capital money. Um, this will be very helpful, I think, through grants, uh, through the efficiency standards that they're trying to establish. And again, it may not be a, a net zero cost to the town, but I think there are a lot of costs that we already have, whether we like them or not, and, uh, this can accelerate the process, and, you know, hopefully, you know, maybe we get some type of reimbursement, where you're paying fifty cents on the dollar versus a hundred cents on the dollar as we move forward. So, uh, I'm glad we were at where we're at now, and not where we were when we got nine fa, nine folders in January, but, uh, again, I wanted to thank everybody in the committee, it was a lot of time, and thank Al for, uh, for, for the way he kinda puts it all together, the, um, the proposals, the, the charts, the way we had gone through everything, it was, it was very comprehensive, and, uh, I think we, uh, did cross our Ts and dot our Is, and if, if there's, uh, backup materials needed, we have all, everything there, so...
Any questions?
Just, um, I, I, I thought it was unusual, but I'm saying it in a positive way, that you came up with a unanimous decision after going through that process, and, uh, on top of that, it's, it's invaluable, the work that the committee's doing, uh, the cost savings to this town going forward. You, you mentioned maybe it's a net zero, but I mean, if we look down five years, six years, actually, it's gonna be backloaded, all those costs are gonna come back, it's gonna save departments money, because we have presumably entered more efficient buildings and the, the sources of, of trying to generate, you know, whether it's heating or air conditioning, you're gonna get it back, so, uh, it's invaluable, the money that we're saving, that, that you folks are able to help the town save.
Well, I think the other thing that's gonna be great, when you look at these, uh, what they do is the audit, is they'll, they'll, they'll tell you, you know, like a boiler or something that we've definitely needed at, you know, say, one of the schools for years, uh, they, they'll be able to break down exactly for you when you break even as. And it was, it was interesting to us as a committee to find out, you know, in twelve years, you, you, you break even, but there may be some things in the proposals that take forty years to recoup, and essentially, you just go to them and say, you know, either we don't wanna do that, or we're gonna commingle it with other things to make it blend together to get us to where we wanna be. But again, I think it would facilitate that end of not taking the As, Bs, and Cs of capital plan, and going back year after year after year, and hitting one or two of them when you know you need to hit ten to fifteen of them, hopefully, and, and go from there. So, uh, it's not over, I think it's just the beginning, and a number of the, the discussions we had with the final companies, uh, was the fact that, one, it would have to go back to the Board of Selectmen, two, it would go to the Town Administrator, and there'd have to be an inner working between, uh, capital planning, Town Administrator, Board of Selectmen, to find out, you know, when the audit, audit does come back, where the priorities lie, and how you're gonna approach the, uh, approach the whole process from the get-go.
One thing Al said, and I just wanna make sure it was clear, 'cause I, I think I was clear on it, because of the audit by this, uh, company, this company's the one that ultimately, if we go forward with their recommendations, we're gonna be using them. It only makes sense, that's the way it has to be.
Yes, that's correct. If we, if they did the audit, and we decided, ah, we don't wanna go forward, then we will owe them the money for the audit, and that money was appropriated at the fall town meeting.
Right.
And, and their cost's far below what we appropriated. So, um, we, we can stop, or we can go forward. It would behooves, I believe, unless we find out that we're not able to work with this firm, it'd behooves to go forward with this particular firm. And, uh, when I say guarantee, it's not like a, uh, a shallow guarantee, it's a state regulated guarantee. They say if we're gonna, if this project will cost this much money, if it exceeds that, then they're financially responsible to pay for the excess cost. Uh, likewise, if it falls, savings fall short, then they have to make up the savings differences. So naturally, it heads their bets, so when we see some projects, we'll say, whoa, that's a big cost, and that's all it's gonna save, but of course, what they're trying to do is make sure they're capped. Uh, and generally, what I've, what I've seen in going, talking to some of the reference firms, uh, reference towns, uh, the savings, the costs are lower and the savings are better, then come through in the audit, so we're, we're kinda covered.
Much like the INI, try to do the most for the biggest, or spend the least to get the biggest return, that's, I just wanna say, thank you for, you know, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple things?
Sure.
Um, first of all, I think both Al and the committee are being modest, um, this is a tremendous amount of work that we've been working on eighteen months. I tasked Al with this right after I came in the door, I think after having seen how successful it was in Springfield. Um, but it, it was a tremendous amount of work from the RFP to the review process. The fact that we got so many bids, I think, is, tells, you know, bears well for the town. I just, I, I wanna remind you of a few things, though, we do have to go back to town meeting when the audit's done. We have a pretty viable capital plan now, I think, so that'll segue nicely into what Paul was just saying, about being able to objectively rate the relative priorities to be able to fund what's needed. But I just wanna take a moment to talk about what one of the board's goals has been for the last two years, in terms of us really being a leader in the Commonwealth for energy efficiencies in green communities, and a lot of that work is due to the people here, but, you know, solar, wind turbine, green communities, pilot program, one of four of the state for solarized Massachusetts, and now this ESCO program. So, in terms of utilities, which is a huge part of our budget, and energy efficiencies, but clean, green, um, alternatives, um, I think the community can be really, really proud, and a lot of that's due to the work of these folks, and Laura, and some other people, so, you know, it's not often, I think, we get to pat ourselves on the back, and we are state of the art in this town in terms of this kind of stuff, and people all over the state are starting to recognize it, so, thank you very, very much for your work.
Right. Yeah, I, I agree, I, you met on Tuesday nights, many times we'd have a late meeting, and we'd walk out in the hallway, and say, what's that noise? And they would still be going strong in the room next door to us. So, um, to me, this is easy, when you get, you know, a handful of intelligent people together, they put in hours and hours into a project that they're, they're passionate about, and they all come up with the same answer, you know, who am I to say that, uh, you know, that this, this is the wrong company to pick? Uh, you know, the project is good, just so people understand, there's a thirty-three thousand dollar commitment, um, you know, if they give us back an audit and we say we're not doing any of it, then we're gonna have to pay them thirty-three thousand dollars for the audit work. I think that would be far fetched, that we wouldn't find one of the three hundred projects on there that we don't, that doesn't have a, an immediate payback. And, um, and I think we actually get, if I remember correctly, months ago- And I think we actually get, if I remember correctly, months ago, that we actually, you know, we get the benefit of that. So we, they guarantee returns, they guarantee savings, and if, like Al said, you know, it's hedged. If they don't hit it, then they owe us the funds for it. So it's really a win-win situation and really, as Tricia said, follows our green plan. So many people in town don't understand what the town of Situ is doing. They don't even know that there's a solar array going in and that there's a wind turbine going in, and that we have all these things going on that are cutting our utility expenses down to really, really, really low levels. And Paul, you've headed this up since you were on the board up here, and, you know, kudos to you for the years and years you've put into this. But it's having an immediate, huge impact on the town and the town's financial situation. So thank you for all this. And like I said, this is easy for me.
So, Sean?
Although none of you are up for reappointment, consider you are.
Consider you're reappointed.
Short of it.
Motion?
Please.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract to develop a comprehensive energy improvement project under Mass General Law's Chapter Twenty-Five, Section Eleven, small i, to Amoresco of Framingham, subject to the successful contract negotiations.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Just one quick question, Paul. You mentioned that there was some sort of backup in the motion about a second?
Yeah, our mentality was, when we voted it, we just wanted to make sure that if Amoresco, for some unforeseen reason, which we don't anticipate, can't do it, then we don't have to start from square one. We have kind of...
Is that in here, though?
No, no, it's just a second choice.
It would only be on...
Again, but then again, we wouldn't have to do it another time. We just kind of did it in our motion, all it wants to say, so we don't have to do it.
Wonderful. So you've got a Plan B?
Yeah.
Great.
Not that, it's not anticipated, but saves on our meeting.
You don't want to come back for another three months?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Get unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I see that Linda Ferguson is here now for Agenda Item Ten. I do as well. So we will go back to number ten.
My pleasure. Thanks.
Kim, I'm just going to step off.
Nice job, Paul. Number ten, we're going to discuss the entertainment license and the change of hours and type of entertainment in the patio area at the Inn at Situate Harbor. Mr. Danny is going to refuse himself.
Linda Ferguson from Inn at Situate Harbor. I'm very sorry. I was trying to squeeze too many things in at once, and I thought Senator Headland might talk for at least five minutes, but apparently not. I'm very sorry.
No, no.
No sweat. No sweat, Linda.
If we had waited two more minutes, I saw you in the hallway, but...
Oh, that's okay. So I'm here because the last time I was here, it was brought to my attention that the entertainment license that I thought was till ten o'clock on the patio was in fact only until nine. And I apologize that we had been running entertainment till ten o'clock up until that meeting, and then I stopped it. So, but, so I wanted to come back and just, you know, make it till ten o'clock like I thought it was. You know, we hadn't had any complaints. I think everybody around us thought it was till ten o'clock. We did have one complaint by one neighbor who, also a friend of mine, who called the hotel directly. The entertainment had gone well past ten o'clock. This was last summer, and we went down and stopped it immediately. But other than that, we've not had any problems with the entertainment going till ten, so I was just hoping to change it from nine to ten on the patio. And then I also put in there that I would have liked to allow the singers to have a microphone when they're out on the patio. Almost all of our entertainment is just one singer with one guitar, and when they're on the patio and the cars are going by, you really, they get drowned out. And, you know, so I just thought for them. However, out of deference to my neighbors, who I love dearly, I don't want to infringe upon them. I have a great deal of respect for them. My sole purpose in asking for the microphone was just because, you know, the singers get drowned out. But, you know, I can always just have them sing inside, I guess. You know, I just, I thought that with just, it's not like I have a seven-piece band out there banging on drums with a bass guitar and stuff like that. So they do get drowned out, and I, you know, if you weren't interested in giving me the microphone, I'd like to maybe give it a shot, you know, maybe some, you know, Heritage Days weekend or some weekend in July, see how it goes and see if they are amenable to it. I did explain to them, I'm probably the worst person to own a bar. I go into the bar, and if I can't hear the person next to me, I go over and yell at the bartenders, tell them to turn the music down. I think that the music is there to create an ambiance. It's not a rock concert. And I know in rock concerts, you don't talk to the person next to you in the bar. That's what you're there to do. You're there to socialize, you're there to talk to the person next to you, and the music should just be background. So even inside, where I do have the microphone, I do tell my bartenders to turn the music down all the time. And the other thing, too, is out on the patio, before my neighbors are going to complain, I have twenty-nine guest rooms that are going to be calling me if that music is too loud. And so, you know, I don't know what else to say. I just, it's truly my entertainment, I can't afford any more than one person. So it's really only one person and a guitar out there. We do have one band that comes, they're local, and everybody's local, and they're a ton of fun, Larry's Closet. But I can always just have them play inside, because there is seven of them, sometimes more. Everybody seems to jump up and sing with them. But everybody else is really one person, and so I was just looking for the microphone for the singer's voice so that it didn't get drowned out.
So just so I can clarify that, it's not amplified instruments, it's just an amplified voice?
A voice, yeah. Because they're all just playing guitars. I mean, I think some of them do plug their guitar in, but I have no problem saying no to them on that, that, you know, if you play one guitar, you play another, right? It doesn't really, right? I'm not really a musician, but I just assume that if you can play an electric guitar, you can play a regular guitar just as easily, right? And I'll just tell them, I didn't... I was just looking more for the voice.
We're not going there. Yes, Mr. Murray?
Leaving aside the amplified microphone aspect first, just for the hours, the ten PM, is that unusual? Is that a common hour for other people around, other establishments?
There aren't any establishments in the harbor that have that.
Outdoor, yeah, okay. So the other ones are ten o'clock, though? But they are indoor?
No, I mean, TK's, well, I think Bins goes to ten, I think TK's, I go to midnight, and during the one, it's to midnight.
Yeah, okay.
Tavern goes to midnight, indoor.
Yeah, right, okay. And you've been licensed to nine, but in practice, you've been up to ten, right?
But that was my mistake. I'm very sorry.
I understand that. No, I just want to make sure that I understand. So, I mean, because since you've been going to ten, we haven't gotten any complaints.
Right, and it is quiet hours at the end at ten o'clock. So ten o'clock, everything's, you know, is supposed to be shut down. Even inside, I know I can go till midnight, but we shut it down at ten. And then, you know, everybody's supposed to be quiet. I mean, sometimes they aren't, and, you know, we go and yell at them, and they get quiet because we tell them if they're not quiet, they're going to pay for every guest room in the building, and they don't like that.
Sure. Where I'm coming from on this is, I'm fine with the ten o'clock part, the second part of the motion, but I do have some questions or, you know, concerns about the microphone, just because it's outdoors and no one else has that, no other establishments have that. And, you know, so my preference would be, yeah, keep that on the inside and, you know, move in that direction, just to be candid with you. Want to support you as much as I can. You guys do a great job.
That's fine.
I think you're a model for how you work with the neighbors. And, you know, we get emails of support, and it's not usual that, you know, someone is trying to do something to the, after it gets dark for a long time, and then we get people saying, yes, please allow this. So I just want to make sure we keep going on that, Linda.
That's fine.
So that's where I'm coming from on this.
Yeah, no, I totally agree, and I just want to explain to you why I asked for it. It was just simply...
I completely understand where you're coming from.
And I have no problem.
Yeah.
Sean, I guess I didn't realize you had an outdoor entertainment license now, till nine o'clock, outdoors. And you're the only establishment in the harbor that has this, all right?
I guess, I don't know.
Full-time.
Let me just repeat that. So they have an outdoor entertainment license right now, till nine o'clock, but it's not amplified.
Right.
Right.
It was till, I was playing till ten by accident.
Right, that's what I thought I heard. Right, okay.
So the first part I was talking about was, I'm fine with moving that from...
Nine to ten.
Ten, because I remember the last time you said the quiet hours are ten, which I, like you, I appreciate, you know, when I'm traveling, you know? And so my comment was just on the amplification part.
And so, all right, yeah, all right. I just want to make sure I heard that right. Okay, that was, I wasn't quite sure about that earlier. I like the fact that you're very conscientious of your neighbors around you. You know, that speaks volumes to me. Have you spoken to them before coming here tonight about what your plan was?
I did speak to some of them today.
Okay, some of them, okay.
We've been a little crazy at the end, and we're doing a little out of work. But I did speak to some of them today, which is why I have no problem not getting the microphone. I just wanted to explain to you why I had originally applied for it. You know, they're concerned about the noise. I don't blame them. And I would be, too. I mean, if I had a bar around the corner from me, I would be, too. And I just hope that, you know, I think we do our best to keep that noise down. I, you know, we're doing our best, and I don't think we've had any complaints.
I know you're doing a good job. You kicked me off the patio at like nine o'clock to go inside, and there wasn't any music. You just had us come and go inside, which is, which speaks volumes.
I mean, our priority is our guests and our neighbors. I mean, we want, we want the inn and the dog watch to be something that the town of Situate can be proud of. And if there's neighbors that aren't proud of it, then that doesn't work for anybody. And likewise, if the guests aren't happy, that doesn't work either, so.
I might just have some more later, but right for right now, I'm all set.
Yeah, I think, you know, your establishment's in a unique position because it's really in a residential area. You know, you're surrounded by houses that are literally a stone throw away. Of course, they're also right on Front Street that is loud, and it's a little ironic that you're, need a microphone to drown out traffic that, you know, the neighbors are hearing also. So it's, you know, I think the fact that it's microphone voice and not microphone instruments are, have a little bit of an impact, but certainly, you've been conscientious of the neighbors. I believe that if the neighbors were rebelling, that, as you're kind of saying, you wouldn't proceed with it. So what I'm going to do before we talk anymore is open up to the floor and see if anyone else has any discussions. We've got a few emails, and let's just vet it out and see where it goes. So is there any, yes, ma'am?
Hi, my friend Larry, one ninety-nine Front Street. They're very good neighbors. I just don't want to hear them. And I would like some clarification on acoustic, which is what their license is versus amplified. And I think that's where some of the issue is. It's acoustic, I don't know what acoustic is. Plugged into something and then it's plugged into an amplifier, but then I have seen very large speakers over there. So I think I'm against an outside anything because TK's is the elephant in the room. So if they get amplification and later hours on the patio, then we're dead on the front of Front Street. But a huge issue is acoustic and amplified. I don't know that difference, but I think everybody needs to be on the same page because I'm not sure that we are.
I, I'm not a musician, and I'll give you my two cents, and then I'll pass it on to you guys, but amplified means you're plugged into an amplifier, into a mic. And I, I mean, just from watching MTV and they have acoustic concerts, the guy's always singing into a mic, but his guitar or his piano wasn't plugged into anything. So I don't know technically whether singing into a mic would be considered amplified or not, but, yes, it is?
Yeah. Acoustic is a type of instrument, and you can amplify an acoustic instrument or not. And you can have a voice that you're singing, and you can have a voice that's singing with a microphone, and that's amplified. So it's really amplified or non-amplified is whether it's going to get louder. And acoustic or not acoustic is almost immaterial because acoustic guitars, when amplified, can get quite loud, and electric guitars, when amplified, can get quite loud as well. So it's the, it's the type, when you say acoustic or not, that's just the type. I suspect you're mostly concerned with the noise level.
I really cannot believe what they've done over there. I just don't want to hear it.
Have you heard them yet?
Pardon?
Have you heard them yet?
Yes.
Has it been a problem?
But it shut, it shut right down at nine o'clock, but if we're looking for an extension. I mean, I talked to Noel, I talked to Cohasset. This could not even be on the page in those towns.
That's kind of irrelevant, but...
Well, you're right, but, you know, this was a battle on Front Street.
Yeah, I mean, we understand, we don't want to set a precedent that carries on and gets out of control. So just so I can get it clear, so at this point, the nine o'clock acoustic license, you don't have a problem with it all?
No.
It hasn't been a problem? There's been one time when Linda...
You mean nine o'clock, non-amplified?
Right, acoustic, or non-amplified, whatever.
Seriously, I mean, acoustic has nothing to do with amplification or not. You need to say amplified or non-amplified.
So I think the license says acoustic. That's what I was just looking at.
That's a misunderstanding on my part, because I thought acoustic meant non-amplified.
I think, yeah.
Well, as Tony says, you know, you watch MTV, you know, MTV unplugged allegedly, they're playing acoustic instruments, and they're all plugged in. So they're actually not unplugged.
So at this point, it's been fine to this, except on that one instance that you're aware of, okay? Any other comments from, yes, sir?
I'd like to see if they're amplified at five or have music inside up at nine o'clock and do what they're doing with it now and market that way. And if they're going to have to play above the traffic, well, how loud is that going to be, Mr. Schipper? You asked a question.
Right, yeah.
How loud would that be?
I guess it depends on the instrument and the amplification, right?
I'd like to see if they're amplified at five or have music inside up at nine o'clock
Any other from the, yes, ma'am?
It was a good block for two on Front Street. I just want to say that they have been, in this case, called in the morning, and we can't figure out when there was very loud music. You know that in Saturday, we couldn't talk to the person sitting next to you. It was so loud, and we were friends there the same weekend, and they asked that the speakers could turn it off. This was nine, something was thrown in the car. These were great, they, the speakers probably put me out, took me two or three months. I mean, I had a big concern about that.
Any other comments? Yes, sir?
Larry, one ninety-nine Front Street. I was just, I just might have curious that there's only one venue in town that's allowed outdoor entertainment. What is the special situation?
I don't think anybody else has asked.
Right. Nobody else has asked. What, I'm sorry, what was the word? Curious?
I'm just curious why this is a special circumstance? Were they, were they, when they are allowed to have outside entertainment? I do believe others have asked.
I don't recall, I mean, I don't have the longevity that Mr. Harris has, but I don't recall anybody else really asking for a continual license like this. I think some establishment has for special events or for short periods of time, but as part of a committed establishment, as Ms. Ferguson's entity is, setting up shop where they clearly have an indoor part and an outdoor part continually. I don't think there are any others.
No, I don't think they've asked, to answer your question.
Yeah, so it's not like we're doing anything special here. It's just that they're the ones that asked.
I may, I may, yeah, I'd like to quote Mr. Lord in that the hearing, he said, this I may, I may, yeah, I'd like to quote Mr. Lord in that the hearing, he said, this is a very, I think he used the word slippery slope. Once you open the possibility by allowing it in one establishment, then we have justification for every other establishment to ask for the same privilege. And this has been, we have had a history of issues with a particular establishment on Front Street who have requested outdoor entertainment in the past, and it's been denied them. And we are feeling a little bit pressured here that this may be the beginning of that slippery slope that Mr. Lord.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's what we've talked about the whole time, that we're, we're aware of the fact that we don't wanna set a precedent that's going to, you know, expand into something larger than we want it to be. But, but I don't think this is a special situation. Somebody applied for an outdoor license to, to play acoustical music or non-amplified music and, I mean, it's not uncommon. It is, it is in Sichuah, but it's not uncommon in, in the state. Sean?
I would look at each case individually.
Absolutely.
This is unique in that, you know, she said it and you, we all know it, there are twenty-nine rooms and twenty-nine people that could complain just as fast as any one of the neighbors, then she'll have to deal with that or she'll have empty rooms. The other thing I wanted to mention was that if this does get granted and we can find a, somewhat of a common ground here, could we grant it for a month or something like that? We can always rescind it. We can pull it back.
I, I imagine.
I didn't realize up till, just till I read this again, that, that they had an outdoor entertainment license till nine o'clock. I was unaware of that. I mean, their patio is only gonna fit so many people. TK O'Malley's, we could probably, a hundred of us could fit on that patio. And it's a lot different. They don't have rooms right up above that they have to be concerned with. She does, and, and, you know, I understand what I'm saying.
I do, I mean, we do, I don't know if you've ever been in, I do come in, we do try and cater to a different crowd. It's a crowd to go in and sit and relax and enjoy a drink or whatever. I'm not shooting for the TK's crowd.
Wait, I wanna, can I interrupt something here?
So one, Mr. Kim, can I? I don't wanna mention other establishments here by name because TK O'Malley's in particular, there I am mentioning it by name, but they're a fine establishment in this town.
They are, I eat there.
And they serve this town well. And I just, I'm very uncomfortable with, with setting up, you know, from people in the audience, to be candid, setting up elephants in the room or issues like that because that's not this applicant's issue. That's the town's issue. And as Mr. Harris said, we're gonna be dealing with this on a case-by-case basis. If Ms. Ferguson's establishment gets out of hand, which I would be shocked to tears if they do, but if they do, we'll address it. And Mr. Harris said, you know, we can perhaps rescind a license if it gets to be a problem. And then if this is setting a precedent and another group comes in, we deal with that all the time. We have new restaurants coming in all the time. We have new people wanting to, you know, start a marina or something like that. We, we deal with that. And we deal with it on a case-by-case basis. And, you know, if another institution says, well, hey, these guys have it and they're doing a good job with it and we wanna offer some competition and try and take some of their business, this board will decide that on a case-by-case basis. And if that entity messes up, we'll come down on them, just like we would there. So I'm sensitive to your points. It's a, and I think the board is. It's a residential neighborhood. We've heard from you. We really support exactly everything you're saying. It sounds like they are too. But I really don't wanna go down the road of saying this is really about something else. It's not about something else. We need to be aware of something else, but this is just about this application. And that's what we really wanna address. So I didn't mean to interrupt, but people were starting to talk, in my opinion, too much about other institutions and so on. So whoever was speaking before, and I apologize for interrupting.
Yes, ma'am?
I have one last question. Did Chief Stewart, oh, do they have any, do they have any?
Yeah, they looked at, at the situation and they saw that it was in a residential area and they weren't supportive of, of a, of a amplified music in the area. And they think the current situation is reasonable. So, neighbors, I'll ask you. I, I hear that you don't like the amplified music. I hear you don't have a problem with the ten o'clock acoustical music. Am I hearing you correctly?
Non-amplified.
Non-amplified. Is that, is that correct? Okay.
But who was gonna please what's acoustic and what's amplified?
No, that, it's, it's purely just, give me a call, no. It's, it's, it's truly just amplified. I mean, I would suggest, and we need to change the wording on the license, but I would suggest that it just be amplified or not amplified. And my personal preference would be that we say non-amplified till ten. So it's not, it's, regardless of what it is, it could be someone banging on a, in a microphone. You're not calling what an instrument is. It's just the amplification is the issue.
So be nothing that's plugged in?
Right.
Right, so they think that's.
Either a microphone or an instrument or anything. That includes a microphone.
Right.
So that is for both indoor and outdoor?
No, indoor. This is just the outdoor.
No, we're only talking.
I'm reading the license to try and see what the, the indoors, description of music to be conducted, acoustic guitar music, singers for events.
Mr. Chair, right above it, description of premises, in its Sichuah Harbor patio pub area.
But then underneath it, pub area indoors.
Where does it say that?
Right below the, to be conducted on weekdays on the hours, pub indoors, Monday through Wednesday.
Oh.
So is this, which one of the licenses is this that we're looking at? It's the only one, right?
That's the most current license.
But there's not an indoor license and an outdoor license. It's all one.
It's one license for?
One, oh, no, it's one license.
Okay.
So it appears that.
So this would just be for the, on the to be conducted paragraph, for the patio area where it says Monday to Wednesday, four to nine? If what we're talking about would happen, that would say Monday to Wednesday, four to ten, and Thursday through Sunday from twelve to ten. And above, it would say, instead of acoustic guitar music, it would say non-amplified music.
Right.
Correct.
It actually, as you can see from the latest license, it's written, it wasn't specified amplified or non-amplified inside.
It says acoustic for the whole thing.
Hmm.
Correct.
I screwed up.
I mean, that's, you know, the patio.
Okay, so here's what we'll do. Let's, let's change the wording, or let's, let's discuss changing the wording for the patio to be non-amplified music till ten o'clock at night.
Okay, let's make a motion. You can't. You want one of us?
So moved. Second?
Second. Oh, yeah, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're just gonna go to the patio area and change the hours to ten on the two time periods, the closing time period, and it'll say non-amplified music. And if, if they hear or see amplified music, they should go right to the desk there and get in touch with you and you'll put an end.
I'll be down there fashionably.
Does everyone conduct with that?
Good.
Great. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Kim, we'll get the license to you next week or something?
Someone tell Mr. Danahue to come in, please?
So we'll move to number twelve. We'll give John a minute to get back here, but Al and Kevin will be here for the water rates. Al?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In nineteen oh two, water pipes were laid throughout Sichuah. And.
Are these props back here?
Huh?
Are these props back here?
Yeah, I sent some props up. Yeah, we have some props.
Okay.
The water pipes were laid in nineteen oh two, when the water company was formed. They, they extended to almost all households in Sichuah. Of course, the town has grown and water pipes were added since nineteen oh two as obviously more recently, as even the subdivisions are built. But we've been plagued with pressure and flow issues throughout Sichuah. The fire department knows about it. The, and also the source of our brown water is the age of our water pipes.
Not that one, the bad one.
Several years ago, the town adopted a multi-year plan to replace these pipes and the hydrants throughout the town. Pipes are about a forty-year item, so investments we're making this are in things that are really keepers. So as we go forward, we're making sure that we're making replacements in a way that be something that we'll be happy to have for the next forty years. And let me turn it over to Kevin to talk not about all one hundred and eight miles of our pipe, but talk about what have we been doing with the money that's been invested in infrastructure thus far? And where is this thing going? And then I wanna talk to you about what we wanna do with rates this year.
Okay, thank you.
Can we, just one second, there were just some props put up here. If you can just explain what they are for one second, or is that part of the?
No, that, not a problem. The.
Zach, can you get those? You have them both, just for the people?
Pipe on the left-hand side is the water main on Holland Street that we just replaced. And that's just a coupon of the existing pipe of what we cut out. The pipe to the right is the new pipe of what we replaced. So it shows the additional volume of water that we are able to supply throughout the area. And that water goes to fire protection. It's a ductal lion pipe. It's coated in a black asphalt type, just to protect the pipe. It's got cement lining on the inside and it's coated on top of that. And, and that's, you know, pretty decent pipe.
Kevin, can you?
What is, what is that brown stuff on the inside of the other pipe? Manganese oxide.
The brown stuff on the inside of the pipe, should you ask, is.
We have no props to drink though this time.
Yeah, we have no cup to drink.
If you remember, if you remember last year, we drank a cup.
That, that, that actually is naturally occurring iron that's in Sichuah and almost all water. That, that is dissolved iron that, as, as the rain falls and goes through the rocks, it picks up iron in the rocks. There's irony, iron-laden water in our underground. It's, it's also in Poland Springs, by the way. And when the iron, which is dissolved, is exposed to oxygen, then it oxidizes and forms little rust particles. So those are little rust particles that came from within the water and have settled into that pipe. And over years and years, they settle and form the cakiness to it. Now, as water rushes through that pipe, say if a fire hydrant is opened or if a water main breaks, or if someone turns on a thousand sprinkler heads at the other end of the line and water rushes through there, it stirs up all of that iron oxide and creates the brown water. Now, we've been able to, because of Jim DeBarrows' leadership, starting last spring, last fall, and this spring, through aggressive flushing, we've been able to cut down the number of incidents of brown water. But nonetheless, when a, a big occurrence such as a fire hydrant is opened or one of those old line breaks, we get lots of brown water throughout town.
Question. So the old pipe has all that magnani, manganese?
Manganese and iron oxide.
Magnesium oxide, okay. That's gonna happen in the bigger pipe at some point over time, will it not?
Totally possible, sure.
The, the same element will be in our water, but it can be flushed. Right now, if you look at those old pipes, it's like, you know, you think about trying to flush that out of there.
It's like an artery.
It's very difficult. Whereas in this, by annual flushing, any sediment is readily flushed out.
Mr. Harris?
Life expectancy out of the ductile?
Useful life, yeah.
They say a hundred years. I mean, it's, it's pretty significant. And if you look at that pipe, that's, that pipe was just cast iron. I think, I don't know, it was put in nineteen oh two, nineteen oh four, around that area, so.
So the pipes will last, just from a depreciation standpoint, there's a forty-year depreciation on that one pipe. So if you made an investment, bought a pipe, you could depreciate it over forty years. So the finance industry expects that it's good for more than forty years, so. This isn't to say that we won't be replacing pipe, that pipe at some point, three, two or three generations, people from now.
Not in our lifetime.
But we, we're getting a good return on our money out of this old pipe here. And as you see, when we're putting in the new pipe, we're putting in a pipe that is less rust-prone as the old pipe, is bigger to meet today's needs for firefighting. And at the same time, we are doing that wherever we're paving streets and we're, we're, we're going after replacing the pipes at the same time that we're paving the streets, so we don't have to come back and do the pipes later. So I, I thought Kevin might point out what we've done, where we are thus far in town. We've got a chart over here in this wall, another, another handy.
We've got a chart where we, where we sketched out some of the areas. We've done, we've cleaned and lined Countryway.
Can I interject for, Zach, can you get that on the wall, just so people can see it? It's up on the thing there? Can you get it over there? Okay, thanks, Kevin.
We've, we've done cleaning and lining on Countryway, Beaver Dam, First Parish. We've replaced the lines on Holland Street, Tilden Road, and Stockbridge. We have a couple areas in the future that we plan on getting. Why? We're ripping up the roads from Masquashka Pond. We're going to do all the water lines that we can over there. We'd like to do everything. We don't have enough funds to do everything, like Eli Road and some of these small roads are, are very small, like say two or four-inch galvanized lines that are feeding them that are, we eventually wanna get. But we plan on doing everything on Hathley and the areas on Gannett Road, which Gannett Road currently has two water lines on it that are, I think, the youngest one sixty-plus. So we're looking to eliminate that and replace that with new lines. And the reason why we're doing that is because then we pave the roads over it and we don't have to go back in there.
Two lines? In other words, two parallel lines or just?
There's two parallel lines on each side, yes. Some houses are on one pipe and some houses are on the other.
No kidding?
Yeah, it's just the way it was done.
They put in a second pipe and didn't change the old houses over. They just added new houses to the old one.
Waste.
So, and, and this kinda shows the area, what we're gonna try and get in the future. We need to go around the lighthouse, but it's Tilden Road, Beaver Dam Road, Countryway, Talbot Street. In the future, we wanna get up First Parish to the other side of Free A, that's an older pipe. And it could be updated because here's where our water source is. The standby is actually right here. Stockbridge Road we've replaced. We wanna do hand vinyl at some point. We wanna go around the lighthouse, that's a consistent breaker in that general area. And after we get the main, which is kinda like the main flow, how it runs through town, we'll stop picking up some of the neighbors. It's happening to pick up a couple streets each, each year and start replacing those, piece by piece.
Kevin, what's the, the time period on, on the projects you just said? Is that a one year, two year?
You mean, doing the work that we're doing?
No, no, just the few streets that you just mentioned. You said we wanna, you wanted it up by the lighthouse, you wanted to get over by.
All of the years. I mean, it, you know, town's ripped up now. I mean, the water lines we're doing. It's a slow process because you can't.
If you said his, you know, twenty million dollars, just go fix everything in town, nobody'd be able to move anywhere. We'd have excavators everywhere and the system would be disrupted. We'd have to shut everybody down from water. So it's, it's a piecemeal process.
So that's a five-year, three, four, five-year?
We're, we're looking, we look to spend about a million and a half a year. That's about all we can chew off and keep the town functioning. And how long will it last? I think we'll be continually doing it. It's just something that has to go on forever. It's a continual, just like in any automobile, you have to continue to invest in it to keep it running. We don't have the luxury of throwing it away and getting a brand-new automobile. We're gonna have to, we're gonna keep this thing maintained forever. As Kevin pointed out, the idea is to get the main flows from where the water is, which is in the water tanks on, on, on Man Lot and Maple, down to where people are, which is generally in this, that area along the coast. The idea being that we wanna make sure we have adequate fire flow down there. Because these old junky pipes right here don't really well support a fire truck in today's technology with what it's able to pump and what the water is that they can use to put out a fire. That six-inch line is, has a difficult time doing it. So it tends to stir up the whole system when we use a fire line right now.
One second, Sean, do you have a question?
I, when you're doing the project at Masquashka, if you come across an area that's not looped, I, you know, and that's not just as simple as laying down a new line.
No, we took that into consideration, going by the condominium of Masquashka Ave, we're gonna loop that through.
There must be some, I don't know of any, but there must be some because probably sixty years ago, this process, you know, it wasn't.
There are some, but like at the end of Surfside Road, there's nothing we can really do unless we cross the pond.
That's right.
And we didn't have the funds this year to do Surfside Road, say. But, you know, we're hoping with, with additional funding, if we find the money, we'd be able to continue and do the additional work before we pave the roadways.
Now, the good news is the, you have a very responsible water department. They've more than beat their budget. The revenues were good last year, so we're, we will be coming back at the Capitol meeting in the fall to talk about supplemental monies to enable us to complete the work in Masquashka. So when we're, when we're done paving in Masquashka, everything underground is tidy, well, clean and fresh and ready to last another hundred years. What we're here tonight to discuss is, the program was started five years ago, I believe, with the idea that with a five percent rate increase, that would, that would provide some supplemental capital funding for the, this kind of infrastructure investment. And we're asking to do that again this year. A five percent rate increase would raise the average household's cost per year to eight, by eighteen dollars per year. Raises from three hundred and sixty-eight dollars per year for that family to three hundred and eighty-six dollars per year, eighteen dollar a year increase. Now, hate to crow, but of our eleven sister communities, which ranges in the north to Wamouth and in the south to Plymouth, coastal communities and abutting communities, we are the, we are the second, next to bottom in terms of water cost per family. We are one-fourth the cost of an immediate neighbor. We are one-third the cost of two other immediate neighbors.
I'll, I'll tell you what, can you just read them so people get the sense?
All right, well.
Cohasset, this is the average, or I'll do it.
Well, okay.
It's the average cost of the, of, of annual cost of an average family, and this is their water bill. I assume you did it on the, their rate times the ninety thousand gallons?
Yes, it's, actually, that is, it's a survey done by an engineering firm who annually surveys all companies.
Right.
I mean, all towns. And these, this is the survey of their rates prior to our increase even. So it's like a year-old rate for them, but it's.
So here's, here's the average family's cost for water. And Cohasset, and this is per Tyon Bond survey in two thousand and ten, Cohasset, one thousand six. Cohasset, one thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars. Hingham, nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Hull, nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Waymouth, six hundred and nine dollars. Norwell, five hundred and seventy dollars. Duxbury, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Rockman, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Pembroke, four hundred and five dollars. Marshfield, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Situit, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, if we don't vote this increase. And then Plymouth is the number eleven at two hundred and eighteen dollars a year. So that begs the question, how could Cohasset be so much more expensive than us? Do they not have a reservoir, or do they, do they do all their infrastructure over?
Uh, Cohasset has significantly invested in pipes. Um, they, I believe, um, completely replaced their piping system recently.
So most of these higher ones are, have just put a lot, I mean, frankly, before this increase, we didn't put any money at all, as evident by that, that pipe over there, into the infrastructure of the town.
Right. So some of ours is catch-up. Um, so I, I think, uh, they've, they've got that higher cost. They've got a, uh, their, some of their other investments are, are very state-of-the-art. Uh, we've tended to not have state-of-the-art equipment. We try to keep things running in a res- in a reasonable way. Uh, s- one or two of them have private water companies. Hingham and Hull have a private water company supplying them. So that tends to cost a little more. Um, so our municipal water, uh, produced by Situit, um, employees, residents, uh, they're all residents, basically, uh, is, is, keeps our costs low.
And you're asking for a five percent, a one year, I, I know, I wasn't on the board then, but there was a five year?
And we said, we, we said five years ago that we would like to have a plan, our intent, which we would confirm each year, or decide each year, which is what we're doing here for this year, but our intent is for five percent raises, because we looked at this list back then and we were still number ten then. In fact, I just wanna point out to that list, if we go up this eighteen dollars for the average house, household, it doesn't even change our ranking. We're still number ten out of eleven. It's not like we've gonna vault over number nine and we'll be number nine out of eleven. We're still gonna be the tenth cheapest water around. So, we've just been doing it five percent a year for the last five years, and at least my intent, you know, when you're talking about all this sort of thing here, this is a very tangible, successful program, in my opinion, where the rates are coming in and the money is going out, and instead of this, we're getting this, and we're still relatively inexpensive. So I think this is a very successful endeavor. And in addition to supporting this today, you know, my feeling was let's just keep going on this as long as logistically able and financially makes sense as it is here.
Mr. Harris?
Rick, Rick is correct. We've been doing something for at least five years that I can recall, but the method was a little different, if I'm not mistaken. We were lining the pipes with concrete, weren't we? Kramer and Kramer from New Jersey?
We lined Countryway and we lined Beaver Dam also.
But, and I agree, I think just replace them rather than line.
Well, no, what we do is, well, we're debating that a little bit.
It depends on the size of the pipe too, because that happened to have a ten inch pipe, and we could, we could clean and line it. But something like a six inch pipe, we're not able to get the fire flow down into Gannett, down into mine.
Even if it was brand new?
Even if it was brand new, so it, it made more sense to upgrade the pipe. Um, because we vastly increased the flow by going from a six inch to a twelve inch. Instead of going two times, you're probably getting four times the flow, or, you know, you're getting a lot greater flow through there.
And, and it's, it's somewhat of a balancing act on, uh, is cleaning versus replacing. Um, sometimes it's a little cheaper to do one versus the other. Um, and if, if you don't need to replace it, it's less intrusive in the community if you don't have to replace it.
Right, that's why, I don't know if some residents had really known what was going on five years ago or so, but that's what was being done, and it would, you know, a lot less disruption to traffic.
It, it is, it, but the costs are, they get up there. You spend a lot of money when you do the, the cleaning and lining. And, um, the, the product seems good, but I, I feel a lot more comfortable with a new pipe in for, if, if you're gonna make that investment. Um, you know, sometimes you can do it, but you don't know the quality of the pipe the whole way down. If it's affect somewhere in the pipe, the pipe may be cleaned and lined, in ten years down the road, you might have a blowout with the pipe because it can't, can't handle the higher pressures from the new safe pumper trucks.
The other thing I wanna say is, this five percent isn't going to operations, it's debt service. So that's really what the five percent is for, is the debt service. It's not that the operating budget, as Al said, Jim's doing a great job down there, but all of your five percent this year, you saw in his budget when you did it, is for the debt service that's coming in these increases.
Good point. And on top of that, it is an enterprise fund.
Yep.
So it is not impacting the tax rate, it's impacting your water. Mr. Tany?
My, um, only observation, you know, you bringing in these two props, I, I, I think you can see the disparity and, and frankly, the improvement when you're having water going through a smaller pipe that's served its useful life for over a hundred years. Um, there's, there's definitely a need for a, a change. Um, on top of that, you run into a situation where maybe the town should've been maintaining these much earlier, forty years ago, fifty years ago, thirty years ago, whatever it may be. So now, you know, this is the time that we have to pay to fix what we didn't do in years past. Um, the only thing of caution that I'm thinking of is, is that, I know that we talked about this five years ago, about improving it and, and going up five percent each year. And I know, like, between the average that you have here is about eighteen dollars. So I mean, it's a difference probably around eighty dollars in the past five years, which, for all intents and purposes, is, is marginal if it's improving the wal- water quality. And I know I've heard a lot of people down in Lighthouse saying that, you know, that's absolutely necessary because the pipe is so small, keeps breaking, it's, it's fracturing all over the place. So we need to continue to do it. I just sometimes get a little nervous because we're increasing it, increasing it, increasing it. These numbers will continue to creep up, and, um, you know, um, you know, I look at Plymouth, a lot of people probably in Plymouth have their own, you know, well water. So I mean, we can continue to increase it, I'll, I'll support it. But I'm saying, I think we gotta also continue to look at that the next few years and say, how much are we continuing to increase? Because over a span of five or ten years, you're increasing it by a hundred percent, or something, that's all. But I mean, I think the people are very satisfied, they're happy to see the water quality improve, and if it means less brown water, I think everybody, including myself, would say, great. You know, it's worth the money well spent, so, good job. Nice props.
Just, I, one question for you. Um, have we done any sort of revenue estimates with our new sprinkler policy? And what the impact may have on that? Or can, or can we look into that for the out years to see? Um, obviously with the, um, people's, the u- the high users paid a much higher rate, and that's gonna have an, an impact on the revenue of the water department, and we wanna just keep that. Obviously, that won't go in effect this year, but next year, um, it may have a.
As a matter of fact, what we've done is our, our revenues, we've based our revenues over the last couple years on, on our lower revenue years. Uh, this year that we've just completed, uh, or just about to complete, I had, you know, it was a windfall year. Uh, the revenue in the water department is, uh, considerable compared to previous years because of the amount of, uh, irrigation that was used last year. That was with the complete ban and with a half and half. Um, so we'll see what, what, we have some years of non-high irrigation, so we'll see what that does for us, and we can do a projection on that.
So this is a motion for a one-year, five percent increase?
Correct.
Mr. Murray?
Move the board's segment vote to increase water service and usage rates by five percent effective July one, two thousand and eleven.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Harris. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
This was a five percent increase in this year's rates.
That's quite tough.
Yes.
Correct. Ongoing.
Yes.
Yes.
Four, four-year, two thousand?
Starting July one. The motion said starting July one, two thousand and eleven.
Okay, good, sorry. Perfect, thank you very much.
Alright, moving on, uh, item number eleven has been.
There's two of you and there's two pieces of pipe.
Thank you, Kevin.
Here you go.
You're letting me go.
I am.
Item number thirteen has been postponed. Um, move on to number fourteen, which is a drain layers license renewals.
Would you like a motion, Tony?
I would, unless there's anyone, no parties are here for it, so yes.
Well, they're renewals, that's what I was, you know, okay. Move the board's segment vote to renew the following: Drain layers license applications, Jeffrey K. Moss, E. L. Margaretson Sons, Rock Excavating, and Dandell Construction.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? They, um, not opposed, sorry. It's unanimous. Brain cramp? Okay, so now, um, the annual appointments. Mr. Murray, I, you're the clerk, I believe.
Alright, I'll start going one by one.
Is that how we have to do them, Kim?
Yes.
Um, move Patricia Van Cazy as the affirmative action officer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, move to, move to reappoint George Trafton to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to reappoint Daniel Hoffman to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
Second, Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And folks, um, for some of the committees, I'll make sure I pause, in case there's other discussion and stuff.
So those were the only applicants and the only, and they were both the open positions?
Right, exactly.
So when we get into ones that are three applicants for two positions?
Then I'll just pause and we can discuss if someone else wants to make a motion.
Why don't you, why, as a suggestion, why don't you, uh, list both individuals if they're within a, within?
Yeah, right.
And instead of going one at a time, that way we can kinda?
If there's, if there are options.
Like, for the next one, you could probably name them both for the same board?
I'm supposed to do them one at a time.
You can do them one at a time, or can we vote?
Oh, excuse me, you can do that.
Well, I can do both?
No, I think the.
Aggregating.
Actually, if point of order, if you have no changes to the first page, you can just vote it off.
So, I guess my point is, are there two positions open and two applicants for animal control?
Yes, till we see the next page.
And where there's any, um, where there's any, if you go to the next page, if there's any more people than there are positions, or any, you know, some are at large or some are not at large, Kim has put this together very clearly laid out.
Okay, great.
So where it says, like, this person's name and this board and reappoint, there's one slot and there's one reappointment. And there we go.
Right. And even if there was a situation, for instance, on the animal control board where there was a new applicant?
It would show here.
That would not be on this page, because there were three for two.
Well, it's right on the bottom.
I would've said no.
She would, it would show right there.
But, but just as, for affordable housing, for example, there's still, regardless of the two applicants we just nominated and appointed, there's still two positions open on that trust.
Right.
But there are no applicants.
But there are no applicants.
Right.
Exactly.
So.
Now it's at the end.
Right. So, uh, move Dorothy O'Connor to, and Nancy Toll to be reappointed to the animal control board.
Second.
Sec- all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Move Elizabeth Foster to reappoint as the archivist.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to reappoint Russell Clark to the Board of Health.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to reappoint Greg Harris and James O'Hern to the Bylaw Review Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to reappoint Christopher Matthews to the Board of Registars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, for the Cable TV Committee, there are two appoint, two slots available. One is a reappointment. Move to reappoint Kathy Meeker to the Cable TV Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this one.
Okay, there is a new, uh, applicant. Move Kathleen Ann Bollock to the Cable TV Committee.
Second.
Uh, Bollock.
Bollock, sorry. Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Read nothing?
Okay, um, move to a, reappoint Judith Byrne-Ariel as the citizen representative to the Scholarship Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to reappoint Paige Tobin, Commission on Disabilities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, now for the CPC, uh, the first four as listed, um, are the, are the appointees associated with their home board, if you will, like Planning Board, Historical Society, Recreation, and Conservation Commission. And then after that, we'll do the, uh, at-large positions where there's more applicants than there are positions.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? So, I was, I was reading something else.
Okay, so these first four here are the, um, recommended representatives from their, from another board. So for example, William Limbacher from the Planning Board. So he's the Planning Board representative as a voting member to the Community Preservation Committee. Okay, and that's what the first four are. And then the others are down below, we get into the at-large positions where there's more people than there are slots and there may, or may not be discussions. So, um, as we will discuss later, there's, we still need a Housing Authority representative candidate. But I would like to move to reappoint as the Planning Board member of the Conference Community Preservation Committee, William Limbacher.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Like to reappoint Harvey Gates, the Historical Society member of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Second, Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Unanimous?
Move to reappoint Richard Lane as the Recreation Member of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Discussion. Um, I'd just like to know, has Mr. Lane been going to these meetings? I know that there were some issues in the past, and I just wanna make sure before he gets appointed for another term, that he has actually been going on behalf of the Recreation Department.
I can't speak for the, going to the CPC meetings, but Recreation, he has been attending.
And he was rec-? Yes, Ms. Tany?
Um, he has attended the Community Preservation.
Okay. Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure.
And I've, I have not been going to every meeting. I've been to maybe three in the last four months or five months or something, and he's been in, he's happened to be at each of those, I guess.
Now, is he, is he the recommended liaison of the board?
From REC. That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So I think we have a motion. Yes, I second, yes, yeah. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to reappoint Frank Snow from the Conservation Commission to the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, now, Kim, just to make sure that we, uh, understand this, there are four. Let me make sure. There are four at-large positions. Two members who are currently at-large are requesting to be reappointed. If we choose to reappoint those two, then there are two other new members we would appoint. And if we choose to not reappoint those two, then we would have four. Okay, so I would move to reappoint to the at-large positions on the CPC, John Bullman and Paul, John Bullman.
Second.
Uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I would further move to reappoint Paul Scott as an at-large member of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Um, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so having reappointed those two, um.
Let's, just pause, so anybody that wants to make a motion?
No, I just wanna make sure I understand the number. I'm not gonna make any names here. Just make sure we're all on the same page. Um, having just appointed those two, we have two remaining at-large Community Preservation Act positions. And we have four people who have expressed interest, and those four are Lisa Fenton, George Trafton, Steve McGuire, and Ruth Wagner.
Yes.
And so we can pick two, one, or zero of those. So we don't have to appoint anybody. We can appoint one of them, we can appoint two of them.
Because you have two other current members that wanna be reappointed.
We just did that.
We just did them.
There's two, Paul, Parris, and Kevin.
No, that's, that's con con.
Con con.
Well.
So, we need to pick two of those four candidates.
Yep.
So, just so we just don't keep reading down the list, now, does anyone wanna make a motion? I can't make a motion, so does anyone wanna make a motion for one of those four candidates?
I'll move, um, appointment of George Trafton, um, to the, um, CPC.
Second.
Second, uh, discussion? He was the gentleman that is also on the Affordable Housing Trust, is that correct?
Correct.
And we appointed him there?
George has experience in this area, he's actually was liaison before in the past for Housing Authority. You know, like I say, forty years experience, forty years living here, it's not like he's, he understands the dynamic of, of the CPA and the committee, you know, he'd be an asset.
So he was the liaison when he was on the Affordable Housing Committee?
A Housing, Housing Authority.
Authority, I mean, and he's now in the trust. So we have a, a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So it is unanimous?
Okay, and, um...
So there's one more slot for the other three candidates?
I would nominate, well, I've done a lot of nominating here. Sean, you wanna nominate anybody? Or you want me to nominate somebody?
No, it, it, it's, it's difficult. Ruth Wagner, I hadn't known until tonight, she looked very qualified. And we all know Lisa Fenton and, and her history with the town and, um...
I know that people have spoken favorably of Lisa, other people on the board.
She's applied in the past, so I'll make a motion to appoint Lisa Fenton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous?
Other than, what did, what was Ruth's answer to possibly serving on another, you know?
Well, she was very, very competent, very...
Right.
Unfortunately, you know, thank you all for applying, so was Steve McGuire, I mean...
Did she say aging?
Yes. But she said this was clearly her preference.
Yep.
You know, you hate to see qualified people apply for something and not have a slot for them, so, um, thank you for applying and please apply for something else or apply for this again in the future. Although we did get two very good candidates as well, so it's, it's good to have a lot of talent to choose from. Move on to the next one?
Conservation, so here we have, um, two people are up for reappointment. And as our notes indicated, we just appointed somebody new to fill the unexpired term that someone had resigned from. Paul Perris just completed his first three-year term. We have two new candidates, Richard Torsney, who's also applying for Council on Aging, and Maureen Carlberg, who Sean, you pointed out, had applied earlier. So that's what we have there.
So in other words, let me get this straight, we have two openings for Com, ComCom? And we have the two people who are looking for reappointment as well as Richard Torsney and Maureen Carlberg?
Correct.
Four people for two slots.
Two slots.
For two slots, did Mr. Torsney come before us tonight?
No.
No.
Kim?
Who, Torsney?
Yes, sir. I just want to remind you that Kevin Tufts had just been appointed probably two or three months ago. And it was said at that time that it would be obvious that he would be reappointed. He filled an unexpired term.
We need to formally reappoint him here?
Well, I don't think, well, I don't think we can, I don't think we can guarantee a reappointment.
No, no, but, but I, that, I'd like to...
He's very interested in being it and he would like to do it.
He was gonna be my nomination for one of those positions.
But it just can't be, it's not...
Given.
Wasn't decided when he got it last time, it's, anyone can get it right now, so make a motion and we'll move forward.
Move to appoint Kevin Tufts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Murray?
Reappoint, I'm sorry, thank you.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous?
Move to reappoint Paul Perris.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, discussion?
Other, other than, I do recall Maureen Carlberg being, again, very qualified. And it's just like Tony said, it's just tough.
Right. And that's where...
I'd like to talk to her about the Water Resources Committee. Cause they're down two, but I mean, I, I'm, I agree with you, Sean, I'd like to get her in the fold. They're down two people and her skill set would match very well with that.
Do we have a second on that?
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to reappoint Joseph Allen as Constable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
So it's unanimous? Council on Aging, so we have, actually, John, you did a good job figuring out the last one.
Wait, so these, Richard Mitchell and Carolyn Sacks are for the Council on Aging, is that right?
There's only one position open. If, if we, if we appoint the four people who've, who are presently on, you have one slot open.
Okay, so, but that's not the way, so there's six people for five slots?
Yep.
Anyone can be appointed whether they were on it last year or not?
My, my general, my personal feeling is unless someone has really given us cause to not reappoint them, if they've been a good attending member... You know, someone raised a question if someone was attending meetings earlier in this sequence, which was a good question. I mean, you know, whatever. Casey tuned in afterwards. If someone, if there's attendance issues or other issues in there, then my personal feeling, and others may think differently, is that reappointment is, is in hand. Unless also maybe someone's been on for a long, long time and, and, I mean, like a long, long time, not just three years or, or six years with one year off. But then maybe time to bring in some new blood, but that's just my personal feeling.
Opposite, that I would say anyone that applies has an equal chance to get on and, and it just goes on whoever the five we pick out of these six people, so...
Move to reappoint Meg Stillman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to appoint Richard Mitchell. Second.
All those, uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three more.
Move to appoint Joan Powers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Murray, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to appoint or reappoint Rocco Cabarrus. Second. Caribus.
Carabas.
Barbas. Sorry, Rocco.
We're gonna go with Rocco. Discussion?
Robas.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous? One more to fill?
Is that right, one more?
Move to reappoint, one more, Kim?
One more.
Uh, Dale Balog. Second, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right, so we did that.
Uh, move to reappoint Gary Carlo as the Agent of Veterans Benefits and the Custodian of Veterans Graves.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to reappoint Patricia Van Kezey, Fair Housing Officer.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just kidding.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to reappoint Neil Duggan as the Field Driver. Second.
Second by Mr. Murray, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous?
Move to reappoint Stephen Litchfield for the Historic Commission.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to reappoint Lieutenant Detective W. Michael Stewart as the Licensing Agent. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Move to reappoint Patricia Van Kezey, Local Action Permit Agent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to reappoint Al, the MBTA, if it's still...
Is this still active?
Okay.
Second. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to reappoint Ann Burbine to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and South Shore Coalition.
Second. Quick.
Discussion?
Aye.
Favor, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, thank you, Ann.
Move to reappoint Joe P. Norton Jr. to the North River Commission and Joe P. Norton to the, as the alternate member to the North River Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to, go ahead, Sean.
Move to reappoint Joseph P. Norton to the Plymouth County Advisory Board.
Second.
Second by Danny, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to reappoint Ed DeSalvio to the Public Buildings Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Recreation Commission?
We have two slots for one.
One person, two slots, Ralph Studley was the one that came in this evening, David Smith was the previous associate member. Whomever is not chosen could be an associate member, is a note from...
Move to appoint, I don't, Sean, this is your committee.
Ralph Studley to the Recreation Commission.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move to appoint David Smith as associate member, maybe? So you don't have to reappoint that? Okay. Situat Council on Aging, excuse me, Situat Cultural Council?
Move to re... Move to reappoint Christine Peters and D. D. Schrecker to the Situat Cultural Council. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
South, South Shore Regional High School?
To reappoint John T. Manning for the South Shore Regional School Rep.
Second.
Second by Danny, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to reappoint Mark Sandem, William Limbacher, and Kevin Cafferty, the Street Acceptance Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?